I'll call the regular reading of the Lakeport -- sorry about that. We'll call the regular reading of the Lakeport City Council to order this Tuesday, November the 15th, 2016. Thank you all for coming down tonight. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Letina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
And Councilmember Sheel is absent. Mayor Spelman?
Here. Thank you. If anyone would like to speak on anything tonight that's not on our agenda, it's not posted on our agenda, please fill out one of these sheets on the back table. And now would be a good time to do that, turn that into the city clerk. We can't come to a consensus or discuss anything that's not on our agenda, but we're up here and if you'd like to speak to us about something, we'll call it random, then we'll listen. So fill those out now and would be a good time. Tonight, I'm going to ask, if I could, for the pledge of allegiance, Michael Forio in the back there that's hiding out, if you could lead us tonight.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, thank you. Next up, we have acceptance of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any urgency items tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then I would look for a possible motion to accept the agenda as posted.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as posted. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good to go. Next up, we have item number four, which would be our consent agenda. And consent agenda will take all the items at one time without discussion. We will open it up to the public and we will also open it up to council to pull any items. Tonight, on our consent agenda, we have item A, which is the ordinances waived except for reading of title. We have item B, which is approve the regular minutes of the city council meeting of November 1st, 2016-2016, it says on our agenda. Item number C, which is approve the warrant register of November 9th, 2016. Item D, which would be authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order and supporting contract documents for procurement of a utility truck for the public works department. Item E would be reject claim 2016-005 filed by Intercare Holdings as recommended by REMA. And item F, which is rejecting claim 2016-006 filed by Carol Brown as recommended again by REMA. Are there any of the items on the consent agenda that the council would like to pull? Discussion. Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any items that are on our consent agenda that the public would like to discuss? Come on down. Hey, Ken. I know your name, but if you could give it for the microphone there.
Ken Sateren.
Okay. Thank you.
I talked to Kelly earlier about the minutes being approved and she said she was going to talk to you about it. Did she do that?
Basically, if you could just kind of go through, I just want to make sure what it is that you want to change on the minutes.
I was here on November 1st and submitted a letter requesting some things be on the agenda for tonight. And in the minutes, it indicates that I was, it would be agendized for future council meetings. That wasn't discussed on the 1st.
Okay. It was discussed to the --
My request was that it be on tonight, November 15th. It's in the letter. And she told me she was going to give you that information. Did she give it to you?
Yes, I did. I did have that discussion. So you wanted to read that it should be specifically the, this meeting here that you wanted it for?
That was my request.
Okay. Which is a future council meeting.
No, it was for November 15th, which is tonight.
Okay.
But the city has never notified me of anything and they've never contacted me.
Okay.
I had to find out on my own that it was not on the agenda.
Okay.
And you indicated you were going to let the city manager know about the letter.
I believe the letter was shared and everybody has that. It was not agendized for this meeting.
Well, I wasn't told that on the 1st.
Well, let's focus on this, though. Is there a correction for the minutes?
Well, I think it should say November 15th meeting. That was what my request was.
What should say? There's nothing --
It says he would like to see it agendized for future council meetings. My request was for November 15th.
Okay.
And that hasn't happened. And nobody has even bothered to tell me it wasn't going to be on the agenda.
Okay, so what you're asking then is the request that it just then read, he would like to see agendized for the next council meeting on November 15th. And then that's an accurate reflection. Did you have further?
I believe it is.
Okay.
And now that it's not on there, you know, maybe I have to come up in my three minutes of the hearing, but I want to know when is it going to be on the agenda?
So I would suggest we can make that change to the minutes. And if you want to come up afterwards and discuss that in citizen input, right now, then we can finish approving the consent agenda.
If you want to consider approving that amendment, you need to have someone to pull it, manage from the consent.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we will discuss pulling that in and making that correction of the date.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to discuss anything on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I bring that back to council, possibly to have that pulled for the correction of the date.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for approval of consent agenda minus letter B, the minutes.
Second.
Okay. We have an approval of the consent agenda minus minutes, item B. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll bring that back for discussion then. Is there a motion to, or discussion to change the timeframe on that?
What the minutes reflect, I think, needs to reflect the fact that he wished that it would be on the November 15th agenda. That doesn't mean that we have an obligation to do that. It just said he requested that. So rather than at a future meeting, we just put that he requested it be on the November 15th agenda instead of a future meeting.
I am fine with that change.
I am also. So we would make that change, David?
You would need a motion. I'll make a motion to reflect the change in the minutes that it would read, that Ken Sateren requested that his items be on the agenda for the November 15th council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor of the changes on the minute, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All good. Ken, thank you. Keep us in our rightful seat here. Next up, we have public presentations and requests. I have citizen input tonight.
Yes.
Okay. You stacked them up there. Ken, you're back up.
Beans is not on the November 15th agenda. I'd like to know when is it going to be on the agenda?
Okay, we can't discuss that, but we can take that. We can take that and --
And I'd also like to know when is the city manager going to contact me to discuss the items in my letter so that it can get on the agenda? As the city manager, when is it going to be on the agenda?
The staff did send a letter to Mr. to Ken stating the items that he asked for in his letter. We did address his letter in a timely, that we get the items he had listed on there.
And we are putting it together, I mean, we're putting together some items that you were looking for specifically, contact with specific things. So other than that, I mean, we can't get into a discussion on it, but --
Did the city send me a letter?
Yes.
Yes, we did send a letter.
When was that?
I'm not sure, but we did send it out to --
In ten days.
End of last week, I think.
End of last week.
As of today, I have not received anything.
Okay.
Maybe staff could send a second letter just to make sure it's received.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
I think the one thing that we need to be clear on is that when someone walks up to the podium and requests that something be on the agenda at the next meeting, that's not something that's automatic nor is it practical because almost everything that comes before the council needs to go through staff and they have to do staff reports and they have to get all the people involved and they have to do research. And people just can't come in here, hulker skelter, asking to be placed on the agenda for random items. We have very specific agendas that are prolonged out for months and months and months. You can't just demand to be on the agenda, but you can come up and speak, as you have.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Nobody explained that to me when I was here on November 1st.
Well, typically, I mean, that's part of not being on the agenda is we can't break into a long, prolonged discussion and we can't come to consensus. We can't, yeah.
And the other thing is, I met with you on February 16th with councilmember Parlet.
Yeah.
And you said you were going to write me a letter.
I know. We went through that at the last meeting.
Well, it's now been 273 days and I'd like to know where is the letter that you were going to write? And why have you not written the letter?
I can't, I'm not going to sit here and discuss that at this time.
When are you going to discuss that?
I would discuss that with you in private. I would discuss that with you at a meeting. I would discuss it.
Is that something I have to request to get on the agenda?
You have already done that. Okay. Everyone was nervous when we saw you come back. I know. Staff is there. You're busy walking here.
My name is Ray Sommer. I'm the owner of the property at Kent Queen Anne Way that got approved for a subdivision, for a four lot subdivision. What I'm here for is to discuss is the sewer bond issue. And I want to start off with thanking Margaret and thanking the financial director for all the information I got on the existing bond that's sitting there right now for all properties in the South End for the sewer improvement bond that was issued. It was issued back in 96 and it was, the council saw it in 91. So it took that amount of years to get the bond up and running, funds acquired. My main issue here today is that I questioned the city council, or the city of Lakeport, being able to give out sewer hookups to properties that were not part of that bond. And Bella Vista was one of them. Bella Vista only had a one hookup on that piece of property. They paid into the bond over time, like all the other people in Lakeport that have paid into it. But for some reason, they were issued an additional 34 hookups without being part of the bond issue. There was a report done by the original engineer on the bond issue and it was stipulated in that bond issue that certain lots would only get certain number of hookups and that those hookups would be allocated out per certain dollar amount all through the city. And I just want to state that I feel it's pretty unfair that they were issued hookups without money being brought back in to help pay that bond down. And I know that Margaret has talked to the attorney and the council has stated that the city went ahead and did it and that there is no information about whether it can be added or subtracted from the issue. So my question is, in the future, because I know there's another one coming up, is 35 lots and how the city can give them sewer hookups without paying into the bond issue or paying down the bond issue? Or, like, hookups for me?
You don't need.
Since I have 65 extra hookups that I'll never be able to use. And that piece of property I own, I haven't paid since 96 towards the issue and my property will use no more than four hookups at the most. So I don't know how this can be resolved. I don't know what is being discussed with the attorney.
Well, we did, I just want to make sure we had correctly issued those, which we did according to our engineer report. There was no, we did not have to change the allotment for that property. But I have not talked to attorney a little bit deeper about summary assessments, you know, which I will have that conversation with him and see if there's ever been any possibility for that.
Of shifting.
Of shifting. So I'll get that. He's not, he's gone for like, over a week now. He'd be gone for at least another week or two, but I will follow up on that, see if there is a possibility that we could do that under that bond. I'm not sure.
Because at this point, I'm paying almost $8,000 a year for my sewer hookups on the piece of property.
Yeah, I, you know, I admit, I didn't ask him about the reassessments. I did ask him to make sure that we had appropriately permitted the, that was done appropriately and appropriate, but I will further my discussion with him about other future possibilities.
Yeah, because I'm concerned and I'm sure other citizens of Lakeport that have been paying all these years into it are very concerned that someone stepping in and not having to pay anything down on that lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it was almost $6 million to approve this.
Yeah.
To approve the plan and expand it. And I mean, they're taking on the benefit of the expansions without paying for it.
I will look at the possibility and discuss that with council later if that's something you want to do, if we can do it, so.
Okay. And I want to thank the council for acting on my information that I gave them back in July about refinancing the bond. I mean, that's going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. So thank you.
That's a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Was there any other questions?
The other one's in the regular agenda.
Next up, this evening, under public presentations and requests, we have a proclamation which is designating the month of November as hospice and palliative. Did I say that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Care Month. And we have, is it Corrigan?
Corrigan's not here tonight.
Oh, okay. Are you Janine?
No, I'm Cindy.
Oh, you're really throwing me a curveball. Can I, after I read this, can I put you on the spot? Would you like to say a few words? Okay, great.
Cindy, what's your last? Sobel. Nice to meet you.
Go ahead and read this out. City of Lakeport, County of Lake proclamation. Should I take my glasses off? Thank you. The joy of being farsighted or nearsighted. Whereas hospice care empowers people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. Whereas hospice services of Lake County and transition's care provides patient and family caregivers the highest quality care delivered by a team of skilled professionals that include physicians, nurses, social workers, bereavement counselors, health aides, and a spiritual care provider, and trained volunteers. Whereas 20% of the 262 Lake County patients receiving care to date in 2016 are Lakeport residents and 21% of the 250 individuals and families receiving grief counseling services are residents of Lakeport. In 2015, 150 community volunteers provided 12,865 hours of service in support of the mission of hospice services of Lake County. Whereas every year, hospice saves Medicare more than 2, this with a B, 2 billion nationally by providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort anywhere at any time. Whereas hospice and palliative, I need to, okay, care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of health, excuse me, options of care and share their wishes with family and loved ones and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by, that the city of Lakeport, along with hospice services of Lake County, does hereby designate November 2016 as hospice and palliative care month and call upon the citizens and leaders of government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses in the city to increase their awareness and understanding of care at the end of life. Passed and adopted this 15th day of November 2016, Mayor Mark Spelman. Thank you. Thank you for your work, Ken.
My name is Cindy Sobel. I'm the director of Patient Care Services at Hospice. Corrigan really wanted to be here tonight. He had to go home ill. So he sends his apologies. And all of us at Hospice would like to thank you for the proclamation. We very much appreciate it and look forward to continued service in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Being of the age, when you were younger, you had parents that were taking care of older members of family, but once you reached the age of late 40s, 50s, suddenly you have parents and family members that are of that age that you think of those things and you appreciate the services that are out there that sometimes are a godsend. I don't know if I can say that. David, am I in trouble by saying godsend?
Yeah.
Okay. I always have to check with the lawyer to make sure what I'm saying is correct. Not in trouble for something. Thank you again, Cindy. Next up, item six, which is public hearings, but we don't have any public hearings tonight, so we'll jump to council business. And I believe this would be with Jenny and this would be to accept and file the other post-employment benefits report as presented. I think I'm talking a little too close to the microphone.
Mayor, council members, thank you. What you have before you is a rather complicated document that values the amount of the benefits that we have committed to our employees when they retire. It's a calculation and a report that's required by GASP, the Government Accounting Standards Board's Statement Number 45, and it, and we've asked the gentleman who presented the report to come and talk through the report for you, so hopefully you all have a better, and members of the community all have a better understanding of the report. So I'd like to introduce Jeffrey Kishik and he's with Total Compensation Systems. And I believe this is the second report you've prepared for us?
At least, maybe third.
It might be the third report. So this is the first time the report is being brought to you for your review. So I'll turn it over. Thank you, Jenny.
All right. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Is this thing on? Is it working?
I think yes.
Okay. It's been a while since I've been here. I did some work for the school districts up here a number of years ago, so I like to get up here. As Jenny said, this is something that is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board. For those who don't know, the Government Accounting Standards Board is a private standard-setting body for accounting for public agencies. It's headquartered in Connecticut and it provides accounting standards that govern how financial statements for public agencies are maintained, particularly the audited financial statements that are part of your CAFR. The issue that we're talking about tonight is sometimes called other post-employment benefits. The other meaning other than cash. So there have been accounting standards in place for quite some time governing how you account for pension benefits. But what was missing for quite a while was anything explaining what you do for things that you provide for retirees that are not cash. And the main thing that's provided for retirees that's not cash are health benefits typically. And medical benefits, of course, are the things that are the most expensive and that's what the city of Lakeport provides for some of its retirees, are medical benefits for them. The accounting standards are based on the idea that anything you provide for retirees is a form of deferred compensation. So you wouldn't be providing it for them if they hadn't worked for you. And the proper thing to do from an accounting, from an accrual basis, accounting basis, is to reflect the expenses for those benefits while people are working so that by the time they retire, you have a liability that represents the full value of the benefits they'll receive in retirement. I think the best analogy for people to think about is our pension benefits. Most people are familiar with how pension benefits work. When you have pension benefits, you earn those benefits while you work. And while you're working, money is paid into CalPERS, for example, to build up with investment income enough money to be able to pay those benefits so that when somebody retires, the city doesn't have to pay any more money in for those benefits. Those benefits are paid out of the liability. And health benefits have not historically been handled that way. They've been handled by paying for those benefits after people retired from city funds instead of prior to retirement when they're actually earning those benefits. So even though the health benefits aren't dependent on salaries, it doesn't change the fact that they're being earned while people are working and that's when they really should be reflected in your expenses. And as I said, when you reflect something in expenses before you pay the cash out, that builds a liability. And so typically, you would have a liability on your books. The, these accounting standards that GASP puts out there, like I said, they're to be used for your accrual basis accounting statements, not necessarily for your operating budget, but it is important from the standpoint of the CAFR. It's also if you want to float a bond issue for some purpose, the bond rating agencies, they are going to look very much at your accrual basis accounting statements and see what the liability is, how big it is relative to your revenue, what kind of plan you may have for managing the liability and things like that. When we're doing these valuations, I mentioned before, it's very much like the way you do pension valuation. So we have a model for how to do that. We start with, first of all, the methodology we use has to be in accordance with two things. One is the accounting standard because that's the main purpose. And the second thing is our actuarial standards of practice that govern me as an actuary in how to conduct these valuations. And the bottom line is that we take your actual information. We're not basing this on cities like yours or averages. This is based on your actual information where we get information about each and every active and retired participant in the retirement health plan. And then we use assumptions about the number of employees that terminate prior to retirement, when, you know, when they retire, what age, and how many years of service, what happens to the cost of healthcare over time relative to the benefits that are being provided for those that qualify. Mortality, of course, the how long people get paid depends on life expectancy. So when we're doing these valuations, there's a whole list of assumptions that we make. Typically, we make, assumptions are consistent with what CalPERS would do with their pension valuation so that on valuation, so that on your balance sheet, the assumptions backing those liabilities are going to be consistent, you know, because that, that's what makes sense to do. Now, for the city, the city right now has benefits for only those employees who are hired prior to 7-1-2005. So that limits, you know, obviously, in the past, the city was aware of the potential liability. This first came on the radar, actually, of the accounting of GASP back in, actually, the late 1990s. It became effective for the city only in the 2009, 10 fiscal year, but it had been looked at, and there were, you know, there were some draft accounting standards that came out before the final one did, and they became effective for the largest agencies in 2008, but for the city, I believe, 2010. The city was looking forward, they were aware of these, these looming accounting standards that were going to hit them starting in 9, 10. And the city made the decision to limit the benefits at that time to those folks who were hired prior to July 1st, 2005. So in having foresight to do that, the city was able to limit its liability, particularly now that we're about 11 years in the road. So the liability for the city is not as large as it would have been had the city not done that. It's also not as large as it would have been if the city provided, you know, very generous benefits. The benefits that the city provide, provides for those hired prior to 7-1-2005 are not particularly rich compared to other cities in the state. We do valuations for, at this point, for about 60 or 70 other cities in the state, as well as about 350 school districts and, and another 100 special districts or so. So we have a pretty good sense of what's going on statewide. And first of all, like I said, the city was relatively reasonably constrained even prior to 2005, the benefits that were being provided. Required 21 years of service for someone to have their medical benefits paid fully by the city. There are still many, many places where they're just providing benefits under the CalPERS Medical Program, where as few as five years of service in a, a public agency will get you lifetime benefits, even if you only worked a month for the city. If you were the city of record, you would be on the hook for lifetime benefits for those folks. So by having your own program, by exercising, you know, fiduciary care over the way that the program has been managed, this city is in better shape in terms of the size of the liability than, you know, most of the other cities I, I work with. Some of the key assumptions, when we're doing these valuations, we are looking at, as I said, we're, we're starting with your own participants, the active employees who are still eligible, the retirees receiving benefits. We project, the computer projects year by year into the future, what benefits are likely to pay, be paid, given all those assumptions we talked about. And then it discounts them back to the valuation date at a rate of interest. Even though most agencies are not funding this obligation in advance, we, so you're not necess, you don't have money set aside that's earning interest, the accounting standard requires that we discount the liability, so we have to use an interest rate to discount it. In this case, we're using a four and a half percent interest rate, which is a long-term rate we believe that the county treasury might pay, given a 2.75% long-term inflation rate. And so that interest rate, how, you know, kind of reduces the liability, because we're assuming that there will be money earned on, on, on the liability. That means if you're not earning interest on the liability, then you have to make that up as part of your expense on a, on a basis. Another key assumption is how fast are the amounts that the city is paying for healthcare increasing? And we assume that even though healthcare costs increase at a fairly rapid rate at times, in the, that the city isn't necessarily going to be able to just write a blank check for these benefits, and we're assuming that the city, the amount that the city pays per capita for each retiree will go up by 4% a year. I should add, though, that when we're doing our, our study, we use different costs for non-Medicare versus Medicare retirees, because as you know, when somebody qualifies for Medicare, Medicare picks up a big chunk of that, so that your cost goes down. Those two rates, the interest rate and the trend rate, are the two most important assumptions in determining the liability. Those are the ones that are subject to most uncertainty, and they're the ones that will cause the liability to be higher or lower by the most. So those are important assumptions for the council to keep in mind, yes?
When I was reviewing a lot of the data in there, and there's a lot of it, I saw that 4%, and I think, here before last, they were talking about a 15% increase, and it only came out at 10, and then they were saying that it looks like it might only be 9. And when you're talking about 4, that's like, you know, 44% of what it actually is now, and it says the trend is like, we think that 4 is safe, but if you're off by 100% from 4 to 9, or something like that, that's a huge difference in the amount of unfunded liability, right?
You're absolutely right. And that's why, you know, again, I want to emphasize that the 4% is not a representation of how fast health costs are going to increase. It's our reflection of, if you are in a 2.75% inflation assumption, environment, what we think you are likely to increase the amount that you pay for retiree benefits over time. The, you know, at the end of the day, if, if you just agree to pay whatever the premiums are, you can be exposed, exposed to exactly the kind of risk you're talking about. But there are ways to mitigate that through, through the, you know, the, the terms of the program. And so, you know, we, our, our feeling is that if inflation goes up at 2, 2 and 3/4% a year, it's difficult for us to envision that if health costs go up 10% a year, that you'll be able to continue to increase what you pay for healthcare by 10% a year. The, the sort of the implicit assumption is that somehow you would need, you would find a way to limit that in some way, by changing the terms of the program, changing the benefit plan, changing the carrier that you use, the insurer. There are lots of ways to mitigate that, so it doesn't, you don't bear the full burden.
Yeah, but what, so what you're saying is, if it does continue, then there's going to have to be some serious considerations made and some changes made, because we can't sustain a 10 and a 9 and a 10. We need to get something down into the, you know, 4 or 5 range, otherwise it's going to be unsustainable with the current program.
That's right. I mean, if you increase the trend by even, what you pay by even 1% a year, that could increase liability by 25%. So it's, it's, you're absolutely right. It's a really key thing to keep an eye on, you know, on a year-to-year basis, to see where it is, and recognize that that liability is highly leveraged to the trend rate. So where did we end up when we, when we did the valuation? We determined that the accrued liability is about $6.9 million for the city. For those, all those retirees who are in benefit now, as well as those folks hired prior to 2007, 1-2005, who may someday retire and receive benefits. I want to, you know, I want to emphasize that the $6.9 million for those people working represents only part of their liability, because remember, we're assuming they earned that all the way through their working career. So part of the liability is yet to be earned for service, they will render between the valuation date and the time they retire. So that liability will continue to go up. By the same token, the liability will be offset by the fact you're paying benefits out. So as you pay benefits out, that kind of, you know, offsets to some extent the additional liability that's being earned. If you were funding on an actuarial basis, putting the money aside in a fund that are earning 4 and 1/2%, the amount that you would need to put aside in order to accrue the value of these benefits over a 26-year period of time would be $409,000 roughly, as opposed to what you're now paying for current retirees, which we estimated in the 15, 16 year to be $326,000. So in other words, in order to accumulate the liability you need, you would need to put aside over and above what you are now paying for retirees, an additional $83,000 a year. Now, keep in mind that assumes that the funds are earning, the funds are earning 4 and 1/2%. If the funds were earning more than that, and they were locked up in a pension-type program, the amount you would need to put aside would be less, because more would be, more of the cost would be covered by investment income than would be if you're earning 4 and 1/2% of the money. Now, you may be looking at and saying, gee, if we have a $6.9 million liability, and we only need to put $83,000 a year in there over 26 years, it sounds like we're never going to get enough money, and that, the reason is because that $6.9 million liability will ultimately peak and then start to really decline, because you have a closed group of employees who are entitled to benefit. So, you know, again, that mitigates the situation. If I were looking at a typical situation here, where you are continuing to provide benefits for, for active employees, I would say that your annual required contribution would probably be about double the, the, the pay go, so you'd be around $750,000 or so instead of the $409. It's that star of the difference. So that preparation has really made the difference between those, you know, the funding versus non-funding, pretty manageable relative to other agencies. I recognize $83,000, still a lot of money, you know, but it's a whole lot better than, than it would have been otherwise, for sure. Looking forward, what's going to happen? Well, under the accounting standards, you will need to have a valuation done every two years going forward. So part of that is, as Mr. Parlat was saying, you know, if the amount that you're paying increases faster than is assumed, every two years you look at it, you make adjustments to the actual assumptions we're using, the actual data, i.e. what you're currently paying for retiring coverage, as well as the assumptions. Maybe two years from now you look at and say, eh, we need to change one of these assumptions or two of them to match what we're really seeing out there that, that's developing. One of the things that can change is not only that the, you know, things can be different from what we assumed, but as I mentioned before, we're using CalPERS retirement tables, for example. And as CalPERS changes their benefits, or they change their tables that they use, because they do studies every five years or so, to see whether they need to change some of the retirement rates or the mortality rates. Whenever they change those tables, that can, that can result in a significant change in your liability as well. It could be up or it could be down, it just depends on, on the way that goes. So you need to be prepared that that can provide some disruptions in the liability over time. There's also no accounting standard. The next time you have a study done, it may be under the new standards. The new standards will require you to reflect the entire liability on your balance sheet, on your CAFR. Up till now, they were allowing you to recognize it gradually over a 30-year period of time. And now 10 years into it, they're going to say, oh, we were just kidding. You have to reflect the entire liability right away. So that's the, the liability has been part of the disclosures all along, so I don't think it should be a surprise to anybody who looks at your financial statements. It was in the note disclosure, note disclosures going back to the beginning. But it is still something that will actually be a liability on your balance sheet, so something to be aware of. The, I mentioned before that as time goes on, more and more agencies are pre-funding these obligations. They're setting them aside in a trust that's irrevocable, where the money can only be used for retiree benefits. That irrevocability was a barrier, particularly since the Great Recession, for an awful lot of public agencies, that because of cash flow considerations and budget considerations, just were not comfortable locking money up in a way that they could get, you know, get to if they needed to in an emergency. But as we're, you know, we're moving along and things are, you know, gradually improving in many, in many areas, it started, it's something that, that agencies are starting to think about again. There are a number of vehicles that are out there. CalPERS has their own vehicle called SERP, which is where a lot of it is. There are advantages to pre-funding, there are obviously disadvantages well, as well. In terms of the advantages, the, you know, the advantages are that it establishes generational equity, i.e. that the benefits for each generation of employees is paid for while they're working. The, when you, when you fund, pre-fund that way, it also makes your expenses more responsive to staffing changes. Again, you have a closed group, so, you know, adding to staff doesn't increase your obligation here, and so in that sense, you already have a certain amount of protection there. Greater benefit security, of course, to the extent that benefits are funded, it means that it's less likely that those benefits could be taken away down the road. Bond rating agencies I met before, they like to see that things are in the process, these obligations are in the process of being funded. And also, as I mentioned before, if you are pre-funding, the more investment income you earn on those funds, the less comes out of the general fund in the long run. So CalPERS is, you know, often will point out that something like 75% of every dollar pension they pay out is attributable to investment income. That's how powerful that is over decades of accumulating investment income on assets and, and compound interest. The main downside is that you can't pre-fund unless you have the wherewithal to put in more money in, out of your, out of expenses than it causes to provide the benefits for retirees. I, I think, without exception, every agency I've worked with, if they could magically jump from today to being fully funded, everybody would want to do that, for the reasons I mentioned before. The problem is getting over that hump and finding some way to find the funds to be able to put aside on top of everything else that you're doing, to be able to start, you know, chipping away at that unfunded liability and, and funding it. Again, because you have a closed benefit, as long as you have a closed benefit, just by paying the expenses on a, on a yearly basis, you're actually resolving the issue over time, because you're not adding to that obligation. So if you do that over a long enough period of time, you know, you'll be in a position where the whole thing will be taken care of, but that, you know, given, given your situation, that could still be another 40 years or so. And so, you know, there's a question of, you know, would you want to do something to speed that up? Right now, if you look at the, the report, we do have a table on page, page 11, that shows our projection of year by year, what you, we would expect you to be paying toward the cost of retiree coverage, given all our, our assumptions. And you'll see that until about 2021, it's really pretty level. It, it's not going up at a very rapid rate. And then in 2021, it starts kind of bumping up a little bit faster, maybe 6, 7% a year, because you're paying for an increasing number of folks. And so there, you know, as I said, there's, there's no real huge urgency right now, given your situation, to pre-funding. If you did, there would be some benefits for sure, but it's not really, as I mentioned before, as compelling for you as it is for, you know, most of the agencies I've worked with. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jeffrey, thank you. So you're telling us we're in good shape, but we better keep an eye on it.
I think that's, boy, it could have been done a lot, a long time ago. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I think you're exactly right.
It seems to me that Dan Buffalo let us know about the changes in the CAFR, and I think that we've been putting that on the front page, I think, for the last two years now, to, to show all of that information, because it was required. And he has this award-winning CAFR that he's produced the last two years, and I think we have it on the front page. But the thing that disturbs me that PERS is talking about, you know, 75% of the, of the payouts are from interest, but yet their investment portfolio performs so poorly that cities all over the state of California were bumped by 60, 70, 80% of their unfunded accrued liability. And ours went from 7 million to something like 16 million. And we had to literally go out to an out-of-state bank, pay it down to level it off so that we could function as a city. And that, you know, I have little, if any faith in anything PERS does, in the fact that they're charging us 25% interest seems onerous and illegal, quite frankly, that they could do such a thing. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, you know, certainly the, the amount of the investment income is, is, is subject to somebody's crystal ball, any, you know, whoever's making the, the assumptions' crystal ball.
And it was pathetic a couple of years ago. We lost millions.
Oh, yeah, they, they took a huge hit in the Great Recession. They made a lot of it back, but now the last two years have been pretty, you know, pretty level. And now they're behind because in order for them to come out even, they got to make seven and a half percent. And seven and a half percent, um, you know, they, they haven't made that in the last couple of years and it's looking like this year's going to be a little tough as well. So, yeah, I mean, certainly the amount that it pays is going to depend on the, the investment return assumption. But whatever it is, you know, every dollar of investment income you get does reduce the amount that comes out of your budget by a dollar, you know, however, you know, whatever the rate is. So there's always some benefit long-term, but it's a matter of is that long-term benefit worth the constraint on operating funds in the short term? And there's no, there's no universal answer to that.
And as Mr. Kusak mentioned, the, the, the biggest thing that was done was having it closed. Any employee that was hired after July 1st, 2005 is not under this retirement tell. So that really helps manage future liabilities on this.
Mayor, if I could just make one clarifying comment. Councilmember Parlett, what is reflected in our CAFR currently is just related to retirement pension benefits. The OPEB benefits, which we're speaking about tonight, are the health benefits, the medical benefits, and those are slowly being presented. But the, the full value of the liability will have to be presented on the financial statements in a couple of years. So we're making progress, but this entire liability is not yet presented in, in our balance sheet as a liability, just to clarify.
Yeah, the, the drop dead date for reflecting this on your financials is for the 17, 18 fiscal year.
For a city, for a city our size.
It's for everybody.
It's for everybody, that's right, it's for everybody, okay, good.
Jeffrey, thank you. Any other questions of Jeffrey or Jim? I know we're looking to just accept and file this, we're not taking a vote on this tonight, but open it up to the public, see if there's any comments or questions to do with this. Okay, show of hands, who liked my description better than Jeffrey's?
You can make the motion to receive and file this if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept and file the OPEB report as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where do you have to head back to?
Uh, Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenny, thank you. All right. Next up, we have under council business, item number B, which would be Public Works Director. That would be Kevin, right? And we're looking at Doug. Oh, Doug, okay, we're going to have that, I'm sorry. Uh, Doug, we're looking at approving application 2017-002. You've got the, you've got the folder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Before you is an application for the, I hope I pronounced this correct, Critterium Bicycle Race. A presentation was made to council earlier. Council gave staff direction to get together with the promoters of the event. Today, we've had three meetings with, with them. I think that we're making some great progress. It's quite an undertaking, but it has my support 100%. I think I can speak for the rest of the staff that we're all very supportive of this. What's before you now is we're asking for you to approve the application for use of public areas requested by the Main Street Elite Cycling Team to hold a Critterium Bicycle Race in downtown Lakeport with the conditions that are attached. And, uh, you know, direct staff to keep working with them and see if we can bring this thing to fruition. And, and the, um, we have also, in the audience, quite a contingency. We've been working, um, really closely with, with David and I'm sure that he would like to come up and, and probably speak.
Sure.
About the progress that we've made and, and working on making this thing happen.
All right, thank you, Doug.
That was a tough act to follow. I don't know if, I don't know if I'm going to compete with that guy, but, uh, yeah, we've had a few meetings with the chief and Doug. I think their obstacles that we have are actually very manageable. And again, I don't know if there's any remaining questions. We've addressed the traffic issues as well as we can. We've asked Granite Construction for a little bit of help to improve a portion, a very small portion of the city street that we need to use. Their response is pending, I haven't got anything official back from them, but we have made the request. Other than that, this really is the first step. We have a lot, our club has a lot more work to do beyond this, but we can't get to any of the further steps without, obviously, the city allowing us the use of venue. Following this, we will still need to get permitted through USA Cycling as well as the Northern California Bad Assailing Association. And of course, there's the logistics of putting together the rest of the, the ways. But this is a, this is the first step and so far, so good. Doug and Brad have both been amazing and helping us get this far. So hopefully, we can, uh, can get this through, we appreciate it.
So the, the question I have is that with the nine different issues that are, the staff is recommending, you don't have any problem with any of them?
Well, to be honest, I haven't seen them.
You don't have a copy of the staff report?
No.
Okay, we can, we can get that to you.
I mean, I don't think there are anything that are too heavy-handed, but I was a little bit concerned about the, you know, Fourth Street, uh, street situation there. But I think the whole idea, and if you're working on them getting some kind of a contribution in some way, shape or form, that would be great. But, yeah, these are what staff are recommending.
They're not a big deal.
Yeah. I just wanted to...
Yeah, our, our, our main issue for bringing this to council now is, is we really need council to approve the concept, you know, with these conditions so that we can continue working along so that they know that as they start to, to put this all together, that their event's approved, that we're working towards an approved event. And, um, and that's why we came to you with these conditions. They're not all, all completed yet, but I don't see a real problem with them. And by them knowing that, that if we can meet these conditions, their event's approved, that really gives them what they need to start really moving ahead with this.
So Doug, I was trying to find on the map, is it just not completed yet? The locations of like where the vendors would go or beer garden, are we, are we not there yet or?
Right, the map that we, that we currently have is, is actually, that map's even going to be revised because we're pulling it back from Fifth Street to Fourth Street. If you notice the map that you have now, uh, shows a portion of Fifth Speed, Fifth Street being used. And me and Brad got together and we're looking at detours and how we're going to handle traffic. It became very apparent that Fifth Street was not going to work for being included in the bicycle race. So we pulled that back to Fourth Street that then gives us Fifth Street for handling our detour and people that want to come on down into Library Park area and to, to open up the movement that we're going to need to make this work. And that's when the Fourth Street condition came, uh, came up. This Fourth Street really isn't in a condition to have a bicycle race on it right now.
No.
But we're working together and I think that that is not insurmountable, that we can, we can get something done there that will make it acceptable for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. I know your name's on the application, but if I could get you to just... I knew you were up here before and, and your name's on the application, but can I just get you to state your name?
Yeah, David Garzold.
Okay.
And honestly, I just looked at the list that Brad has and it's all stuff that we fully expected. Insurance and a lot on, there's nothing on there. But I, I would anticipate any, any issues we're complying with. With regard to the vendors and all that, that was, that is, obviously, we're still just under a year out and that stuff that's, um, without, we still need to coordinate. In fact, there's one of the conditions on it has to do with the Health Department, which I'm assuming that if, if we allow vendors or provide space for local vendors or food services, that's going to be their responsibility. I, you know, at this point, I don't believe our club as an organization that's putting us on is going to be serving any food beyond bottled water and sodas.
The other thing I was going to mention, I think you made a note about parking at Natural High.
That was actually something Kenny brought up last time, or I think. Parking was an issue and I don't recall who suggested it, but it was suggested that perhaps the gate could be opened at Natural High, parking could be diverted there.
We just need to talk to the school about that.
Sure.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the biggest thing I think sometimes, other than obstacles and things to be dialed in down the line, we look for positive events that are going to, you know, take place that, you know, that are going to promote Lake Port, promote Lake County, especially from out of the area. Definitely sounds like, you know, something that's wrong, that aligns to me personally, but, um, and we really appreciate it. You did a great presentation the first time you came in and I think there was support for it then and we'll discuss it then.
Incidentally, just through using, the use of social media and letting all the local community know that this was going to be on the agenda and whatnot, a lot of the members of our team are social media friends and connections with the other racing organizations around Northern California. And I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from friends in the View County, Chico and other areas that are, that are really, really hoping that this works out because they really all want to come here and race, so.
Any other questions of David Wong's? Okay, thank you.
I would like to apologize to David for not seeing that he had all those bullet points. Evidently, that one went through the cracks, sorry, David.
No worries.
But I would also like to commend them for really stepping up and, and working with me and Brad and, um, being very proactive on trying to address all the concerns that we're foreseeing and, and wanting to get out there and really make this work. I, I think we have a real winning, uh, winning event here if we can get it all put together.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any other members of either David's group or anyone else that would like to speak on this event? Or possible event, sure event? Come on up. Give us your name and...
My name's Alan Neal and I'm a local rider. And I think this would be a really nice event to have because we have a beautiful lake and we have, in October, we have the ride around the lake. Probably familiar with that. We have several hundred cyclists coming in from many areas across the state and possibly even out of state. And I ride in a lot of different places. I go to a lot of these kind of events. I'm not really into racing so much anymore, but some of these other events. And I'll go and a lot of people from Wyrica, a lot of people from Chico and a lot of people from, you know, Santa Cruz, they know Lake County. They know that ride. And it'll bring a lot of nice things into Lake County. And let's face it, a lot of people, more and more people are becoming active and we all need to be active to keep our health up. And when we promote something healthy like that and people bring money into the community and people get excited and little kids show up and get to ride their bikes and it just breeds a nice thing. And so that's why we're here tonight because we want to hopefully see this happen and we'll do all we can to help out. So all, all cyclists in the area are excited about this. I just wanted to note that. Hopefully, one day we'll get a dreaming that one day it'll be kind of like Lake Tahoe, like not quite maybe as rich, but we'll get a whole thing around the lake where you can ride the lake unobstructed from the highway and, and dangerous places like that.
That would be sweet.
Let's do it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Any other comments or questions on this, potential future events?
Huge crowd and they're so quiet.
You are so well behaved.
Is the, is the parking an issue?
No.
The school doesn't own a naturalized parking lot, so are you trying to get the grass open? The school, school doesn't own a naturalized parking lot.
No, I think we were looking to maybe, well, the idea was, I think, to expand that into the grass.
Into the grass?
Yeah.
So they have fees for different events and...
They just need to talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see that as being an issue. High schools always worked with us with our special events. And, and yes, it's just a matter of making sure that they're in the loop and we get their blessing for it.
And the dog owners.
And the dog owners. Don't mess with the dog people. Uh, with that, I'll bring it back to council for either more discussion or we have a suggested motion or we can go to...
It's like the comment, the Knockout Challenge brings 700 riders and like 80% of them from out of the area and it's great. It's a participation situation. I think that this thing here from the, uh, the jerks from all the different events look like not only is it a participation event, but it looks like it might be something that would be really kind of fun to watch. It's almost like a downtown Lamaze, I mean, Le- LeMans kind of a car race only on the high speed. You know, people going around and, and you're just waiting for someone to cl- you know, you know, bump into somebody else and be a wreck, you know, and there's a few crazy people that want to see that, but the other people are like watching it and they're just going around in circles and going crazy. I think it'd be a really good spectator thing for Lakeport and I think it would be a real big plus for the community, adding one more little great event to, to Lakeport. And I, I'd just love to see it and I wish you the best of luck and hope everything goes well and this thing comes off first time clean, neat and wonderful.
Kenny, I think you're writing events a little different than what they've got pictured. With that...
So, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comment, I move to approve application 2017-002 with the recommended conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for this, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Looks like we're good.
Good job, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts so much.
Sure thing, Laura, thank you, appreciate it.
We have one more item, you guys all need to stay.
This is a fun one, yeah.
Next up under...
You can leave, actually.
No.
Next up, under council business, we have item two, which is USDA Water, Water, Wastewater Improvement Project. Authorize the acceptance of the Water and Wastewater Improvement Project to record a notice of compliant, or, uh, sorry, completion of the county's land.
I guess that's going to be me too. Mr. Mayor, council before you is a request for a notice of completion for the USDA project. This is for, there is one portion of the project that's still going out to bid, which is the sewer line underneath Highway 29. But that is being advertised tomorrow. This is for the portions that have been completed. And so we would like to, um, to proceed with the notice of completion so that we can do the prelim wait period and then start closing the portions that are completed out.
Any questions of Doug for staff from council? Open this up to the public for any comments. Seeing none. Doug, I just want to say, I mean, between, I know this is a multifaceted thing, the infrastructure that's been done in the last three, four years, multiple projects, needed projects. I just want to say, I think staff and your crews and the oversight of the other individuals that have come in and done this work has been exceptional. It's, it goes all around, so. I know everybody has a little piece of it, but it's been a good thing for Lakeport, stuff that needed to be done the last three years and years.
Definitely a team effort in front of your city staff and the people that work with us, consultants. And yes, and it is wonderful to see nice things happen for Lakeport. And with the economic conditions as they have been over the last, well, we won't go over how many years, say eight, but to see all of the things that have happened in Lakeport, I think that just speaks really highly of the city itself and the determination of this council and staff members here and our community to continue to strive to make things better for everyone that comes to Lakeport. And I think that that is something that we should take some pride in. And thank you very much.
Well said, Doug.
Well said, Doug.
Well said.
Any other questions or any other discussion, council? I can adjourn the motion if that is the fancy of the council.
I'll move to authorize the acceptance of the Water and Wastewater Improvements Project and record a notice of completion with the County of Lake.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're good. Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
And rest of staff and everyone, thank you. Wish we would have been one step further with the last project there, but got held up just a bit. Last up, we have Council Communications, and I'll start with Margaret.
I was just going to remind council that we'll be having a press for the sonnet. We're going to have a dedication of the police department on December 14, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, so we look forward to that event. That's about it, thank you.
And thank you for that. That's, I think, for, you know, some of us that are leaving council, we appreciate being part of that. It's something well-deserved for a well-deserving police department.
It was a vision of this council to have, make that happen, so I want to make sure you were there at the dedication.
That's very generous of you to share that, but it's always, again, it's a team. David?
Nothing.
I won't even ask you obscure questions, I promise. Okay, Jenny?
Well, thank you. Nothing much is going on in the Finance Department. We've got the auditors in this week, so we're focused on that, and, thanks, that's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I think you've heard plenty from me tonight. Thank you very much.
Well done. Do you have anything else there? You're good to go. Okay.
No report tonight.
Okay. Nothing to report? Wow, Kelly?
I have something to say.
Oh, good for you, Kelly.
We are actively recruiting for committees and commissions, so any interested party can give me a call to see what types of committees that you can volunteer your time on, and that same information is located in the hot topics on our city website, so encouraging interested parties to jump in and be a part.
Great, thank you. Careful, though, how we all end up up here. Councilman Parlet?
Well, if things hold up the way they have so far, I'll probably be back for the next four years, and I'm very happy about that because I feel like we're really going in a very, very positive direction, and this bike ride is another example of that kind of thing. And I'd also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, in case everybody's so wrapped up in work, we almost forgot that there's a holiday coming up, so everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we will see you back here after that. Nothing further.
Councilwoman Maturi?
I just wanted to give a shout out for the upcoming Dickens Christmas Fair, November 26, the Main Street. That's going to be wonderful. And that's about it. Well, we have a League Division meeting coming up this Friday to still our new officers, and I had a really great time at the training last week down in Newport Beach. It was, I'm going to be the first vice president for the Regional Division, and so it was a great get-together of these presidents and vice presidents and the heads of the caucuses and the departments, and all talking about what the League of California Cities is going to prioritize in its actions in advocating for the cities in our state over the next year. So I was very relieved and proud that one of our top three priorities is going to be dealing with law enforcement to help advocate for finding more tools to enable them to continue to keep our residents secure. With the legislation over the last few years, we've been taking away from, from our law enforcement's ability to keep us safe, and so I'm very gratified that the League of California Cities is going to be actively advocating to equip our law enforcement officers to keep us safe. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Project?
Congratulations, Councilmember Parlet. We're happy to keep you.
Is it too early?
No.
No, your number's right.
You did well. Tomorrow morning's the LACCO meeting, if everyone wants to come, it's at 9:30, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it short, too. I just wanted to, I know that they're still counting votes and everything. I wanted to congratulate Councilman Parlet for being the top vote getter so far, and hope that the, for the ones that feel like they're going to be in the other two spots, hope that holds up and works out well. And other than that, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, same thing, there's a holiday coming up, and echo the Dickens Festival coming up. My wife and I are going to actually be participating as a vendor this year, getting our feet wet for the first time, and putting our wares out there to say, we'll see how that goes. So everyone have a nice Thanksgiving, and we'll call the meeting. Thank you for being here today.